Thanks on CNN.
Oops.
Thank you. All right, I will call to order the zoning board of appeals meeting for Wednesday, October 12th, 2022, located in the Selectman's Conference Room, second floor, Town Hall, 367 Main Street, Hyannis, Massachusetts. To all persons interested in or affected by the action of the zoning board of appeals, you are hereby notified pursuant to Section 11 of Chapter 40a of the General Laws of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts and all amendments thereto that a public hearing on the following appeals will be held on Wednesday, October 12th, 2022, at the time indicated. First, we'll do an introduction of board members. I'm Jacob Dewey, chairing the meeting. Herb Bodenseek is absent. Paul Pennard.
Present.
Todd Malantis is absent. Mark Hanson.
Present.
Aaron Webb.
Present.
And Denise Johnson is absent. Please note this record that this meeting is recorded and broadcast on Channel 18 and in accordance with MGL Chapter 30a, Section 20, I must inquire whether anyone is taping this meeting, and please make their presence known. Seeing none, we'll move on to minutes. September 14th, 2022, minutes. Does anyone have any comments or want to make a motion to approve?
Should we move, Paul?
Second.
Mark? Mark, seconds. All those in favor?
Aye.
Minutes are approved. All right. First off, old business. Appeal number 2022-029, Maureen Leveroni has applied for a special permit pursuant to Section 240.91h3, nonconforming lot, and requests a finding under MGL Chapter 40a, Section 6, regarding compliance with floor area ratio. The applicant proposes to demolish two existing single-story structures and replace the structures with one two-story structure on the same or smaller footprint. The subject property is located at 14 Beal Way, Barnstable, Massachusetts, as shown on Assessor's Map, 279 Parcel 014. It's located in the Residence F1, RF1 Zoning District. This was continued from June 2020, June 8th, 2022, again, July 11, July 13th, 2022, August 24th, 2022, and we also have received a request to continue this to December 7th, 2022. So we need a motion to continue.
Motion to continue appeal number 2022-029 Leveroni to December 7th, 2022, time certain or 7?
7:00 PM.
7:00 PM.
Second, Paul.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, so that is continued. Next up, we have appeal number 2022-039, which is re-advertised. 15157 Thornton Drive LLC has applied for a special permit pursuant to Section 240-93b, expansion of a pre-existing nonconforming structure and to Section 240-57, reduction in parking. The applicant seeks to construct an approximately 2,002 square foot storage addition to the southern end of the existing building. The existing structure is nonconforming to numerous dimensional parking and screening requirements, and the proposed expansion will also be nonconforming to dimensional parking and screening requirements. The subject property is located at 157 Thornton Drive, Hyannis, Massachusetts, as shown on Assessor's Map, 296, as Parcel 019. It's located in the Industrial IND Zoning District. This is continued from September 14th, 2022, and I believe we have another request from the applicant to continue this. Do we have a date they requested?
November 9th.
November 9th. All right, so we want to make a motion to continue that.
Yeah, this is Paul. I move that we continue 2022-039 to November 9th, 7:02.
Second, Mark.
All those in favor?
Aye.
So that is continued. Now, moving on to new business.
No, the other.
Continue the second one.
Where's that?
At the top of the.
All right, sorry. In appeal number 2022-040, again, re-advertised, 157 Thornton Drive LLC has petitioned for a variance from Section 240-33e rear yard setback, lot coverage, and Section 240-33f special screening, Section 240-56 parking schedule, and Section 240-57 reduction of parking. The applicant seeks to construct an approximately 2,002 square foot storage addition to the southern end of the existing building, which will intensify existing nonconforming setback, lot coverage, screening, and parking demand. The subject property is located at 157 Thornton Drive, Hyannis, Massachusetts, as shown on Assessor's Map, 296, as Parcel 019. It's located in the Industrial IND Zoning District. This again was continued from September 14th, 2022, and we have a request to continue it to November 9th.
I move that we take 2022-040 and move it to November 9th at 7:03.
Second, Mark.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So that is continued, so now we can move on to new business. In appeal number 2022-050.
I'll tell you what, you know, I'm going to move over here because then we're not talking to each other's back.
Yeah, just take your name tag with you over there. So everyone at home knows who you are. All right, so in appeal number 2022-050, Cape and Islands Veterans Outreach Center, Inc. has applied for a modification of special permit number 1995-163, Condition 6, special permit number 1996-012, Conditions 1 and 2, and special permit number 2013-52, Condition 4, pursuant to Section 240-125c, to standards for granting a special permit. The applicant seeks to transfer the special permit from the current owner, Pitcher's Way LLC, to continue the use of the property as a group home for rehabilitation. The subject property is located at 805 Pitcher's Way, Hyannis, Massachusetts, as shown on Assessor's Map, 271, as Parcel 160. It's located in the Residence C1, RC1, Zoning District. So sitting on this will be all of our members, President, Paul, Mark, Aaron, and myself, and to the applicant. If you want to move forward tonight, we would need a unanimous vote. Okay.
I've never presented in this room. Is it appropriate to sit at the table?
Absolutely.
Standing at the podium.
Come join us.
Good evening, members of the board. My name is Brian Wall. I'm an attorney. I have an office in Sandwich, and I represent the Cape and Islands Veterans Association, Inc., which I'll call applicant tonight because it's kind of a tongue twister. And with me tonight is Jim Seymour, the Executive Director of CI VOC. The applicant is a nonprofit 501(c)(3) tax-exempt corporation with offices at 247 Stevens Street in Hyannis, and the applicant has entered into a purchase and sale agreement to purchase the property at 805 Pitcher's Way. Currently, that property is an eight-bedroom dwelling on a half-an-acre property, 0.57 of an acre, and it currently operates as a group home for rehabilitation, more specifically a sober house. The property is able to operate in that manner because it has the benefit of a special permit that was originally issued in 1995 and has been transferred on two prior occasions in 1999 and again in 2013. And the applicant before you tonight is seeking a further transfer from the current owner to CI VOC so that it can operate a rehabilitative home for veterans. So just by way of a little bit of background, the dwelling was originally constructed in 1985. In 1995, it was already being operated as a lodging house for eight lodgers for rehabilitation of special needs people. At the time, zoning was allowed for six lodgers, thus the property was not in compliance with zoning. And this came to the attention of the owner and the town when the owner applied for a building permit. So in order to legitimize the use, the owner applied for a special permit back in 1995, and after a hearing, the board found that the use of the property was pre-existing nonconforming as a rehabilitative home, and then allowed the modification of that use to allow up to eight lodgers because only six was allowed under zoning. And the board attached seven conditions. Some of them are standard. The ones that I think are relevant to tonight's hearing are the house must have a set of rules, and there must be an onsite contact person, and the special permit cannot be transferred without the consent of the Board of Appeals. So as I mentioned, it's been transferred twice before. It's currently a sober house. What CI VOC wants to do is use the home for rehabilitative purposes for veterans. CI VOC has established programs for this purpose and currently owns and operates a similar property in Dennis, and we believe that the intended use fits within the special permit. And if it's all right through the chair, I would ask that Mr. Seymour step up to the table and just briefly describe some of the programs that we're talking about so that you can determine whether we fit within the special permit.
Sure.
Just introduce yourself and your position.
Excellent. Good evening. Excuse me. My name is Jim Seymour. I'm the Executive Director of Cape and Islands Veterans Outreach Center, and we've been serving veterans and their families since 1983. Our mission, vision, and values quite simply, gentlemen, is to provide comprehensive, life-sustaining services to veterans and their families. We deliver this through a comprehensive menu of essential life-altering and life-sustaining services, which empower our veteran clients to achieve lasting reintegration into the families and the communities for which they have sacrificed. We have five values in our organization, which instill through our organization and our clients what we expect of them: respect, integrity, commitment, collaboration, and accountability. We're governed by a board of 23 members. Most of them are veterans, and every single one of them is property owners here on Cape Cod and Barnstable County. Our top priorities that make up our strategic plan are addressing housing issues, particularly as they seek to address homelessness amongst veterans, food insecurity. We run mobile food pantry and food pantries in multiple communities throughout Barnstable County and Martha's Vineyard. We're going to be growing that because the need is expanding. We also contract and provide counseling services for veterans, for example, PTSD services, anything that may be of challenge to them that may have caused them to be homeless, okay? And we're growing our outreach and our programs. We recently, on Friday, did a veteran stand down at Cape Cod Community College where I know I served lunch for 200 people. So we brought in services and 35 collaborators and reached out to veterans to find ways in which we could help them. As you can imagine, one of the most popular things was we gave out free haircuts. So if you know a veteran wants to be clean squared away, get a free haircut. The line was continuous at that place, and plus, there were three young ladies taking haircuts, so the guys, they're 70 years old, who the hell knows, right? And as far as providing housing, we've been doing this for over 30 years, providing transitional housing. And what do I mean by transitional housing? We encounter veterans in different circumstances, under the umbrella of homelessness. That could be actually truly in a shelter, could be homeless, could also be couch surfing. We have a situation where a gentleman put his kids on the deed to his house and they evicted him, and now he's homeless. Now he's one of our veterans. We have a staff, myself as Executive Director oversee the organization. I have a case manager who oversees the day-to-day management of client situations. I have an operations manager who oversees all the properties that we own and manage. And our goal is to look at this particular property that we're looking at now, Pitcher's Way, as transformational for the lives of the veteran, wherever we encounter them, put them through a program, which is very restrictive and very, there's high expectations. They have to pass a certain background check, they have to be queried, they have to produce DD214, which is evidence of service, demonstrate financial need, and also, we put in programs, for example, to prevent them from recurring what they're doing today, how they want it at my front door. And that can be counseling services, that can be job-seeking skills, that can be budgeting, finance, you know, there's a high expectations on these folks. We've got a bunch of successes in this model, and it's worked very, very well. When we talk about wraparound services, we talk about the pillars that I talked about, food insecurity, counseling, all those kinds of things. The other thing is, when they finish the program, we have what they call SSVF. We have partnered with another organization, and that provides a first, last, and security. The goal is obviously for them to move beyond this transformational scenario into either an affordable or an attainable apartment, home, whatever it might be. You know, a day in the life of one of our clients is, there's high, again, I mentioned there's high expectations on them. We hold them highly accountable. I run it like a military organization. I'm the commanding officer. They understand that. They understand expectations. They understand if it comes to the commanding officer's office, the judgment will be whatever it might be, but we try to journey them along that way, and it works very, very well. You know, their living arrangements, we provide a lot of good resources to them so that they can become successful and get back into the community. The facility, we ask them to understand and sign off that the property is, because some of the guys could be in recovery, it's a sober house, there's no chemicals, there's no drugs, there's no weapons permitted on any of our properties, as well as, as they transition into permanent housing. Perfect example of how we're doing this today is the Dennis House on Lum 34, which we operate and have been operating for a year and a half. We built that and opened in Feb, it'll be two years in February, and it's done very, very well. I think it's molded into the community. We've had no incidences of any sort of encounters with any of the police services or anything like that. Matter of fact, the police chief asked me if I needed a letter of support, and I thought we'd be okay, but they're willing to support us in this and think we're doing a very, very good job. It's interesting, one of the, I get to tell stories, and that's what I do as the Executive Director, I tell stories. We have a young lady who just left the Dennis House, who was a veteran, who was homeless, who we've helped her get to the point where she's getting ready to take her teaching certificate exam, and she has a job offer once she's completed that. So we put her through the program, we paid for all of her education to do all of that, all of the coursework to prepare her for that teaching certificate exam, which is coming up, I believe, in December. You know, we've been doing this for a long time. My goal as Executive Director is quite simply, we've been, we've been doing this for 40 years. We will continue to serve them now, here today, as they need us. I'm happy to turn it back over to Brian.
No, I think you covered everything. So our respectful contention is, is that if you look at the special permit, it doesn't require a specific rehabilitative type of operation. It was special needs back in 1995. It's a sober house now, and I think what you just heard from Mr. Seymour is that this is going to be, obviously, a rehabilitative operation that the vets want to do. So I think that we fit within the special permit, and with your discretion, you could transfer this special permit, God bless you, to the, to the vets. The one other matter I wanted to talk about was just with regard to what you just heard. The way that I understand it from speaking with Jim and also other members of the Board of Directors is that when a vet gets into the program, they meet with their case manager, and they're given a very customized program that they have to meet. And also, part of the idea of the transitional housing is to get them to be on their own. So unlike a sober house, there isn't really a person on the property that's running it or that's the contact person, because that's actually counter to what's happening. And so we would ask if you, let me just read Condition Number 1 and 2 from the permit. One says, "A set of house rules shall be maintained and enforced by the applicant on all tenants." And Number 2 says, "An onsite contact person shall be required. The contact person shall be so identified." And we would ask that those conditions be modified, not to do away with them, but to substitute the CI VOC headquarters in Stevens Street as kind of the contact person, because they run in business hours and they can be contacted at any time, and obviously, the house rules are already all set by the organization. So I would just ask that those two conditions be modified as the board sees fit.
Okay, let me be clear, Brian.
Thank you.
So the conditions.
On the '95 permit?
Well, they were carried forward in all the permits. I think they're pretty much verbatim.
So one of my questions here is, why, why wouldn't, why wouldn't the organization fall under the Dover Amendment here? Like, why do you feel that you even need to be here?
Well, that's a good question. I thought about that, but there's existing special permits, and there's an affirmative obligation that says the permit shall not be transferred without the consent of the board. And further, there's another condition, an affirmative condition, that says if it's not used for rehabilitation, it must comply with zoning. So I just thought the safe route was to come before you. And I would agree, I think it fits within the Dover Amendment.
I mean, I think the sober house probably did.
Yeah.
I mean, the sober houses in town are fitting within it, so it probably would have.
Yeah.
But I think it also probably preserves some value in the property if the organization decides at some point that they wanted to do something else with it, to keep the special permit alive.
Right, because theoretically, there could be a rehabilitative program that doesn't fit within the Dover Amendment.
Correct.
But yeah, that's a very good question, but that's, that was my thinking, is that there was already a well-set forth pattern here, and I just kind of followed it. It also seemed like the easiest path, because rather than making all those Dover Amendment arguments, I think we fit within what the boards have done in the past, and it's just a matter of transferring the permit.
And just to clarify, you said that the contact is available 24 hours? Okay, so it's not an onsite, but it is available 24, so not just business hours? So if there's an incident or something going on, then?
We have a 24 hour.
But, but there is, so is there somebody there 24 hours?
The veteran clients that live there, yes.
Oh, okay, all right, got you. I have two questions. One is, where does your funding come from?
We actually are taking a mortgage out against the building, and we will do fundraising beyond that through philanthropy, through state and federal grants, that kind of idea.
Okay.
And am I wrong? Can I add to that, Jim? The veterans that go there are on a voucher, right?
Correct.
And so maybe you could explain that, Jim?
So we partner with Barnstable Housing Authority, and they qualify, there's income requirements and all that. So we have established rents, and the veterans, based on their financial need, get some sort of a support from BHA depending on their income.
Good.
So some are paying close to the full rate if they're working, and some who have just entered the program who have nothing are probably not paying anything at this point.
So these are HUD VAS vouchers, mobile vouchers, or?
No, they are facility-specific vouchers. They operate very close similarly to that idea.
The other question I have is, what happened to the, to the use of the, of the, of the house before you purchasing it?
What happened?
This owner just decided to sell it.
Yeah.
It's still operating, right?
Well, it's being, in anticipation of the sale, I think it's starting to be emptied, but it, until the purchase and sale was signed and even after it was operating as a sober house with eight, eight lodgers.
Okay. I just wonder, I assume they transferred someplace else or that's continuing?
Taking care of repositioning those guests.
Oh, good.
Yeah, as a matter of fact, the veterans, I did the purchase and sale for the veterans too, and they asked me to negotiate a stipulation with the seller that the people would be transitioned somewhere, they wouldn't just be turned out on the street.
Got you.
And what's the sort of selection process to like decide who moves in there? I mean, is it a lottery? Is it first come, first served? Is it?
Well, first and foremost, it's need-based, it's veteran-based. They present themselves for assistance in many different ways. We have been, we're known as somebody that you can come for assistance, it can start out, you know, what I call gateway homelessness. You come in and you talk to me about, you know, I have all these bills and I can't pay. So we try to work through that. A lot of times, they just show up and say, I'm a veteran, I have a DD214, and I have no place to live. We begin the process, we do a significant intake on them to find out, okay, what else do they need? A lot of these veterans aren't even aware of services that they're, could avail themselves to, whether it's through Chapter 115 funds or other VA medical and things like that. So we help them to do all of that, and if they become a candidate for housing, it's on a first-come, first-served basis. We have not had a waiting list at the moment. We have, from time to time, we do have more veterans that need assistance, but most of those are on the affordable side, you know, attainable, affordable, not in this transitional scenario. That's our, we're addressing that again somewhere else, but these are folks that are basically couch surfing, living in their car. The last guy that we placed was living in his car at the Sagamore Bridge Rest Area. I asked him why he was there. He said, because the bathrooms are open 24 hours. That was his only reason. He was living out of his car, and he was doing DoorDash during the day to try, try to make ends meet.
So I just have a quick question. You, you have no, no fear hesitation that you will fill these beds? I mean, you have, the need is there.
Sadly, no, right.
Yeah, got you.
Unfortunately, no. We will fill them.
And so this is really a combination of rehabilitation, social service, or needs-based? It could be any of those things?
Any and all. Absolutely, yes, sir.
So you raise a good point, Mark. So the decision, is this 1995?
I believe it was, or it was, no, this may not be the 95.
The original special permit was 1995.
This is 96.
The one we're looking at was 96.
Yeah.
Oh, I might clarify that it, the application was in 1995, so it has a 1995 number, but it was granted in 96.
Okay, because there are a number of elements to the decision that are not reflected necessarily in ours. For instance, "A set of house rules shall be maintained and enforced by the applicant at all tenants." That's not part of what we're proving, but it was part of the previous approval, and does that matter? I mean, because this will become void if we approve it.
We're trying to modify this.
Right.
So the applicant's asking to modify 1.
Well, but it's not, it's, there's nothing in here that says they need rules.
Oh, you're looking at the staff report?
Or are you looking at the permit?
Why do we need to modify 1? I mean, you, you indicated that there will be a set of rules already established, right?
There are, right, there are.
But, but is?
But they're customized, so I guess.
Not required.
Let me, let me, there's, there are broad policies that they sign off about behavior consistent with all of what you would expect to be in house rules.
Of course.
That being sober, that being chemical-free. There are certain specifics that they need to do individually, whether that's a financial budget or seek work, depending on what their needs are.
Sure.
But they sign off on a broad array of basic housing expectations.
Yep, yep, as, as I assumed they would. I mean, you're not going to put people in a, in that sort of situation without some boundaries, of course. So I guess Number 2 to me, the onsite contact person.
Remove the onsite.
Well, I think we're going to modify it to say that in, in town or a, located Stevens Street.
87, 87 Stevens Street.
Contact person shall be required.
Yeah.
And available 24.
Is that Condition Number 8? Are we adding a condition as my?
I think we're modifying Condition Number 2 because we aren't going to have an onsite person. We're agreeing there won't be an onsite person, but there'll be a, within a, whatever, probably less than two-mile radius.
To make it a complete inclusive, then we have the findings or the, or the condition, it's got to appear there. It does not at present time.
Right now, there's, assume, we assume there's an onsite person.
But there is not going to be.
There won't be.
Right, so where does it appear here that they don't need an onsite person?
Well, we're going to have to, we're going to have to, that's why we're amending Number 2, because currently in the 96, or 95-163 permit, Number 2 was in, "An onsite contact person shall be required." So we're modifying that to say, "A nearby offsite contact person available 24 hours a day, located at..."
What does it mean?
247.
247 Stevens Street. Shall be required.
Just so you're clear, my entire staff live on the Cape. Everybody resides in the Cape. I live in Yarmouth, my operations manager's in Centerville, my case manager's in Sandwich. So we're, we're, we're localized, so.
I think, given the fact that it was used over the years as a sober home, maybe for special needs, if my memory serves me correctly, that maybe at that point, when the permit was issued, it made more sense to make sure there was somebody on site to address.
Right.
And it was following the lodging house.
Sure.
Bylaw, which requires that there be someone on site.
Yep.
So let's just finish our formalities here. So let's open for public comment. I don't think we received, did we receive anything?
No, we didn't.
Okay, and there's no one here from public comment. So I'll make a motion to close public comment.
Close.
Need a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Ooh.
Okay, so public comment's closed, so now we can bring it back to the board to, you know, sort of figure out how we need to present this, buy this.
Okay, so I'm suggesting in Number 3, the following conditions. These are special conditions?
Number 2, Number 2 has to be modified.
Number 2 has to be modified, but, okay, then this has to say that we incorporate 1 through 7 from that decision. It doesn't at the present time, I don't believe, does it?
It, it does. It says, "All conditions of special permit numbers 1995 through 1 dash 163, shall remain in full force and effect," so.
Okay, so we should, so.
We can add a 4, really.
So a 4 would say?
Well, there already is a 4, it's a 5, actually.
A 5.
It's a 5, yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Four would say...
Oh, five, sorry, a five.
Not, it's not, as long as there's a 24-hour contact person.
Sorry, there's a four here on the next page, so it's a five.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah. We actually worked through it to make it easier.
And then, is there anything else we need to modify? What was the other?
Transfer.
Transfer and...
Parking shall be provided, is that an issue?
No, the use isn't changing, so the parking's adequate, yeah.
So, number six was just gaining consent.
And that's on, is that on sewer, that's on septic? That's on septic?
Whether or not, the sewer system is across the street, but it's on private septic. But it was inspected as part of the sale, and it passed.
Okay, and so it has the capacity, or we're, we're eight lodgers, but we're six bedrooms, is that?
No, it has eight, it's that...
It's eight bedrooms.
The background zoning allows six.
Okay.
And so the eight is non-conforming.
Yeah, by private septic.
And the sewer was built to hold eight bedrooms?
Yes.
Okay.
So you're really not looking for a modification of six, you're just coming to this?
That's correct, we're, we're asking your consent to transfer pursuant to number six.
Okay, I'm just going by the, how it's written on appeals here, just so we're not...
So, number five says, "With respect to condition number two, a 24-hour contact person is required."
Well, we need the place, right, so we're saying...
Yeah, we're saying...
Available at...
No.
No, I said it was...
Oh, do we have to...
We had said 247 Stevens Street.
That is our office.
But that's our office, but I assume the person's not gonna be sleeping there all the time.
Yeah, so I just said 24...
But should we say within a time period that someone could respond? I don't know what the existing police and fire calls to that location have been historically recently, but I know like...
Why don't we call you at 2:00 AM, Jim, if there's a problem?
They already do. They already do. That's why we have a duty phone.
What is, what is your typical response?
So, for example, off-hours. I would say with, within reason, depending on the circumstance, if there's a fire, it's fast, if there's an open wind, a broken window.
And what's the fear of putting somebody in there that would be that contact person onsite?
I think, honestly, it, it challenge, it doesn't provide them the opportunity to start to grow and understand that they're responsible for themselves. It's not a shelter. A shelter, I would say, you would absolutely have an onsite supervisor. Our Dennis property, we have not had an onsite supervisor. They have week-to-week case management, they spend an hour with my case managers, we do a weekly inspection of the property, and monthly systems checks.
Yep. Yeah, I don't fear any of that.
Kind of waste a bed, too, I mean, I, like, you know, it's like, not a purpose intended tent.
I get it.
But I think, I, I just worry about putting more burden on our, you know, local service, like, you know, that we're not having the police department respond there for things that end up being like meaningless. Our police department is stretched so thin right now, our fire department is stretched so thin right now, we can't have the fire department showing up for a, whatever, a beeping smoke detector, that the occupants are calling you about that, and hopefully someone from your team is responding to say, "Okay, you know, obviously the building's on fire, call 911 and get them there," but...
It'll be, it'll be fire protection systems on. A year and a half that we've had Dennis hope, we have had zero calls for service.
Yep.
Got here, "With respect to condition number two, a 24-hour contact person shall be required."
Yeah.
Okay?
And I, the only other thing is that I would just hope, again, like, the way we've gone with our STR stuff is like, that that person is within a somewhat reasonable radius, they're not coming from Bourne or Wareham or something, that they're somewhere that they can respond within, I don't know, 30 minutes or an hour or something.
Police and, police and fire for them to work where they are, they're within 10 miles radius.
The only thing that needs to be changed, and we can incorporate that whole thing in here, and that's good, okay.
And, so there's a modification for two, one...
So, number five. So, we'll be...
Number two, I think, number one is, is clear already, you know?
Yeah, number one, so it's, so it's, condition number two of that, whatever it is, special permit, da-da-da-da-da.
So, one and the two, you wanna make findings?
He's already in town, but it's okay.
Yeah, no, I'll, I'll do it, sure. Okay?
Yeah, go for it.
All right, go for it, all right. This concerns Appeal Number 2022-050, Cape and Islands Veterans Outreach Center, Inc. Cape and Islands Veterans Outreach Center, Inc. has applied for a modification of special permit number 1995-163, condition six. Special permit number 1996-012, conditions one and two, and special permit number 2013-51, condition number four, pursuant to Section 240-125(c)(2), standards for granting a special permit. The applicant seeks, seeks to transfer the special permit from the current owner, Pitcher's Way LLC, to continue to use the property as a group home for rehabilitation. The subject property is located at 805 Pitcher's Way, Hyannis, Mass., as shown on the Sessors' Map 271 as parcel 160. It is located in residence C1, RC1 zoning district. I find that...
Appeal Number 20...
22-050, Cape and Islands Veterans Outreach Center, Inc. is requesting the transfer of special permit numbers 195-163 and numbers 1999-12 and number 213-052, issued for the operation of a pre-existing non-conforming use in eight-room, single occupancy lodging house at 805 Pitcher's Way, Hyannis. Two, the subject property is shown on the Sessors' Map 271 as parcel 160, it is in a residence C1 zoning district. The property is serviced by Town Water and Private Septic System. Number three, Cape and Islands Veterans Outreach Center, Inc. is under agreement to purchase the property. Number four, lodging house, the lodging house is submitted to and complied with all required inspections, and there has been no police activity at the house. Number five, the conditions of the existing special permit states that the permit may not be transferred without the consent of the Town and Barnstable Zoning Board of Appeals to an actively, to an activity related to rehabilitation, social service, or special needs-type ground home use, or for the use permitted by the terms of this special permit in accordance with the terms and conditions set forth herein. I find that after evaluation of all the evidence presented, the proposal fills, fulfills the spirit and intent of the zoning ordinance, and would not represent a substantial detriment to the public good or neighborhood affected. The applicant has demonstrated the property will be operated in clients, compliance with the conditions of special permit number 1995-163. Those are my findings.
Do we need to specify with the, it's gonna be operated in compliance with the conditions of special permit 195-163, with the exceptions we're presenting here?
With the exception of...
Of number two.
Of, the exception of number two, okay.
With the exception of condition number two, and then you guys have sort of written what we're gonna...
Those are my findings.
Okay. And so, just with the exception of number two, and with number two, we're gonna have an offsite contact person provided by the applicant, available to respond within a timely manner to any, you know, necessities. So then we need a second?
Second, Mark.
All those in favor of the proposed findings?
Five.
All right. And, so now, any conditions, Paul?
Yes, conditions one through four, plus an additional five. As noted, the one through four is noted on the staff report that this dated September 29, 2022. Condition number five, we're adding, which says that, with respect to special permit numbers 1995-163, number 1, 1999-12, I don't know which one it is, and 213-052, condition number two should state, "A 24-hour contact person shall be required." And that will be in place of an on-premise, requirement for an on-premise contact person. Those, those are special.
All right, so we'll take a vote on moving the special permit with the proposed conditions, all those in favor?
Mr. Chairman, if I could, I don't, I know that it's, public comments closed, just to prevent any kind of ambiguity, I think it speaks for itself that by adding five, everyone knows that we're modifying number two, but condition number two does say all conditions. You might ask, if I could ask for a comma, you know, "Except as modified by condition number five herein."
Yep.
In that way, it's clear that...
No, in that, yeah, that's what we did in the findings with number seven, too. So, yeah, I think it should...
So it reads, so how would that read now?
Just after number two, at the end of number two, if you put a clause that, you know, a comma that said, "Except as..."
Condition number...
Yeah, here and af, here and after modified by condition five. And then, anyone reading this would be clear that five modifies all those other prior permits. I think it was clear, but you never know 10 years from now.
Yep, well said.
All right, so we'll take, we'll take a vote.
So, Anna, that, you got that?
I got it.
Okay, good, good. So those are my, those are my proposed conditions.
All right, so a vote on the conditions to move the, to grant the special permit. All those in favor?
Aye.
So that passes.
Thank you very much, all.
Thank you for coming in.
Appreciate it.
It's your service.
Actually, we, we thank you for coming in, 'cause we're the only, only hearing tonight, so thank you.
All right, correspondence, we didn't have any, any matters recently anticipated. So David Hirsch has resigned from the board after 10 years of service, so we thank him, and I'm sorry he's not here tonight for his last night, but I will forward on an email to, to Matt Levak and the council to let them know and, and thank, hopefully they'll thank him for his service, as they did with, with...
Alex.
Alex, yeah, two, last week or two weeks ago?
Yep.
So that leaves an opening for our vice chair position. I don't know if anyone has any interest in sitting the vice chair.
Have you talked to Herb?
I have not spoken to Herb.
Can we put this off till next meeting?
We can do that, for sure.
I would, I would prefer to put it off.
I think we should as well, with the, I mean, the need, sir.
So, I make a motion that we, do we need a motion for this? Probably, but no? No, we don't.
They were gonna move this, we'll move this to the agenda for the October 26 meeting.
Good.
What is this link? Instructions?
That's the board election instructions.
Oh, okay, oh, yeah. Okay, and then upcoming hearings, October 26, November 9, and December 7. What's the, are we winding down a little bit?
Winding down a little bit, for the end of the year.
Okay.
And they're all Zoom, moving forward.
They're all Zoom for the rest of the year.
Now, the, the course that you put out for the zoning board, there was, you know, it's, you sign in for, the county does it or something, you put that out.
The CT, I didn't see it, but...
CP...
We haven't seen, I haven't seen it. Are you on another board that you were, got it from?